Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Let's call the meeting to order for the Bellas Falls Union High School District. Is there any adjustments to the agenda? Nothing? Chris Hodgson, you're muted.
Sorry, um, we actually do have a couple of appointments to, um, add. I don't know whether it's on the agenda, so it doesn't really adjust it. But, um, I am going to ask the board to, to appoint a new family and consumer science teacher this evening. So her name is Jacqueline Holmes, if that needs to get added in there and then we go from there.
Okay, we'll put that under appointments because we didn't get any names in there, so. Anything else? Chris, Brad, are we good?
Yeah, I think we're all good. John Bradley will have an appointment also, but that we don't have to make any adjustments to the agenda. Thank you.
Perfect. Review and approve board minutes for March 8th. Jack?
There we go. Do we, do we have any, uh, there is an item here that says unfinished business for discussion action. Are there any?
Uh, Chris. Yeah, Chris Hodgson, do we have anything?
I don't have anything, no.
I don't.
Okay, then, uh, okay, we can eliminate it, I guess.
David, are you aware of something we ought to finish? Okay. All right, let's eliminate them right then. Communication and public comments. Have we got anything, Chris?
I don't see anything in the chat.
I'll speak, Molly, with Rebecca Stockwell.
So.
So first I wanted to say, thank, start by thanking the high school staff for providing the best environment possible for students as they grieve. I see this as painful and hard for the staff and they really are walking side by side with their students. And I just want them to know that they're seen and they are appreciated and thank you for being the light. And then next I wanted to review a couple of things from the last board meeting. So first, there seems to be the understanding that I walked back my character characterization of the letter that was sent to the nurses at the beginning of the year. And I just wanted to be clear that I was simply saying that the reformer misquoted me and I did not walk anything back. I called it harassing and I stand by that because I'm quite certain this same letter would not have been written to a group of seven men. I would call the writing of the letter, the brazenness with which it was sent by not following protocol and the desire of a board member to say, see, he was just trying to help as misogyny. Second, there have been several comments regarding things getting swept under the rug and I would agree with that. So my purpose in bringing all of this to light was simply to keep it from being swept under the rug. This is not the airing of dirty laundry or retaliation. This is transparency and accountability. This board is elected by the public and as such, the public should be aware when an issue of integrity arises. I'm aware of no other mechanism to provide this than to present it at a board member, a board meeting. And lastly, there was two statements made about dads being dads and getting upset and this crap happens and summoning an inner hockey dad. What does this say to our children? We give our boys permission to react in any way they want, including threatening. We tell our girls that this just happens and it's a dad being a dad and we just ignore it. Those are not the values why I want my children or any of the other children in this district to accept. If we don't show them that holding people accountable is okay and it is the standard, then we aren't doing our job as parents and educators.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You do not see anyone in the chat, but as usual, people can speak up if they'd like to speak.
Um, Chris, I'd like to say something in this portion, just to get it out of the way. This is Deb Wright.
Okay.
The, um, the Business Analysis and Audit Committee is actually the name that we selected. Actually, it's one different word. It's Business Systems Analysis and Audit Committee was, that name was selected back in 2020. I just reviewed my material and from February of 2020, that was a name that we, we called the committee. So I want to apologize for the members of that committee who wanted to have the meeting at 5:30 and it got canceled. We will reschedule and any confusion was clearly not on my part or any of the, of the members of the committee. And we'll get this taken care of and rescheduled soon. That was all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anything, Chris, do you?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. We would like to move on to, did we approve, I'm sorry, did we approve the minutes for March 8th?
No.
No, we got, so, um, March 8th meeting, we need to go back to number three. I got way late, I guess. Approve board minutes for March 8th, 2021. We had some corrections and Jack's got his hand up.
I move that we approved it as corrected, I guess.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's made in second to approve the board minutes for March 8th, 2021. David?
I'm merely preparing Molly to, uh, indicate my, uh, ascent.
Jack?
Um, I, I just removed the question and, uh, then to, are we, are we, are we, are we voting now? I'm just not quite sure what's happening.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes for March 8th.
I guess I'm just asking if there's any discussion or anybody found something else that was messed up.
I don't see anyone else.
Then let's move the question, Madam Chair.
Okay. Let's vote on approving the minutes for March 8th. David?
Yes.
Jack?
Yeah.
Steve?
I wasn't here, so I'll abstain.
Thank you. Deb?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Margot?
Aye.
I see Priscilla now. Priscilla?
Aye.
Okay. The minutes are approved.
Did you hear me? I'm sorry, aye.
Yes, I did. Thank you. The minutes are approved for March 8th. We're on number five, appointment of new board member. Ian's, I'm gonna pronounce your name wrong, Ian, sorry, Spratalotti.
Pretty close, Spartalotti. That's very close, so.
Ian is a Westminster resident who has shown interest in becoming a Bellas Falls High School School Board Member.
Yep. And, uh, you want me to talk about that a little bit?
The floor is yours.
Thanks. So I'm, uh, yeah, I'm here today to request that the BFUHS board appoint me to the open Westminster seat. And of course, I'm, as I've said before in the past, I'm a parent of graduating senior and an eighth grader who's attending BFUHS in the fall. My wife is a guidance counselor there at the high school as well. Um, I believe that I'm pretty well equipped to represent Westminster as I've been on a, uh, board in Westminster in the past. And in fact, uh, was the chair of the board for a year. I left at the time because my kids were too young. My kids are a little older now. I feel like I can, I think I can manage it. And as you know, as an appointee, I would fill out the rest of this year and then, um, run, uh, in the spring if I so choose. I think it's important, um, for Westminster to be fully represented at this time because we are trying to navigate our way out of this pandemic. Uh, and we are doing so with, uh, a change of leadership. So I think it's important, um, under those conditions to make sure that Westminster is fully represented. And so I offer myself. Thanks.
Does anyone have any questions for Ian? Jack?
Yeah, hi, uh, hi Ian. Um, I'm delighted that you're showing interest here. One of the things that sometimes gets in, gets in the way of, uh, discussions and can be a problem is when there are, when people have family members who are employees of the district or employees of the school system that we have board members supervising. This was a constant issue in Craftson and the Town Highway Department at one time. And I just, you know, we are negotiating a labor contract. We are doing some, we are, there's a lot of staffing issues that we're dealing with right now and we'll be dealing with budgets coming here. How do you feel that you're going to navigate that stuff?
Well, I don't get involved too much in supervision of staff. I think that's the administration's job. So I'm not super concerned about that. Um, and of course I would recuse myself from any votes on, um, you know, the contracts, um, for sure. I've been able to manage that again in my time in Westminster. Because it's the same contract, you know, it wasn't, it, there's really no difference in my mind as far as that goes.
Hey, thank you.
David?
Thank you, Molly. Um, first off, I want to make it abundantly clear that I'm going to support, um, Ian's, um, request to join the Union High School Board. And I want to say it's about time. It's in 15 months since we've had represent, a full representation from Westminster on this board. And I, I do want to say that I do share some of the same concerns that Jack does. Having, um, a close relative in the employee of the district is not a unique, uh, situation. And I, uh, you probably pretty much answered my questions here, Ian. I just feel it's important to be able to, um, know, um, when it's appropriate to be involved in deliberations and when it's best to step aside from those. And if you are confident that you're able to do that and a really good example, I hate to point the finger at Priscilla Lambert here, but Priscilla was longtime staff member in this school. Very active member of the, uh, teachers' union and has turned out, in my judgment, to be a spectacular board member because she's, in my judgment, clearly able to separate those roles. So I'm certainly, uh, optimistic that you will be able to, uh, uphold the same kind of high standards that Priscilla has demonstrated here. And I wish you all the luck in the responsibilities. You will earn your salary.
Great. Not sure how much that salary is, but I don't think that's really why I'm here, so.
Well, about 11 cents an hour right now for me, Ian, more money making license plates at the state prison.
Excellent.
Steve?
For the second time this year, as unbelievable as that may be, I agree with everything that Jack has said. And I also think that Priscilla was not on this board when she was being active in union activities. So I don't see how David can equate the two situations. The problem really is that the determinations involving negotiations are made in executive session. And things learned in executive session, while they're not supposed to be broadcast to anybody, I'm sure tend to get broadcast to the person who's sleeping alongside of you. And that's why I would vote against, uh, Ian's being put on this board.
Priscilla?
Uh, since my name was brought up, yeah, I did not serve on the board when I was working with the teachers. I am careful, do not have anything that, you know, that goes with the board shared. And I do understand both sides of the, of the issues maybe better because of having had the background in teaching that I have. I am extremely careful what I share during executive session. That being said, I kind of missed somewhere there, um, can I ask Molly or would you ask for me? Um, what position, um, is, I, Ian, is it your wife that's involved? Ian, I missed that.
Go ahead, Ian.
She's a guidance counselor.
At the high school?
At the high school.
At the high school? Yeah, that is, that is kind of a close thing. I know when my husband, um, worked on things, he worked in another, just, he was on the board in another district in Rockingham, um, while I was at the high school, but he was never on a high school board. It does put it really, really close to and centered to it. So it's, it will be a very ticklish situation if you're put on this board.
So, uh, I, I have a question, just I guess from my board because I did think of that as soon as I saw Ian's letter asking, you know, what he needed to do to be considered. You folks on the Rockingham School Board have a gentleman on your board right now whose wife works at the school district. You know, it's, it's really hard to get people interested and to want to be involved in the boards. And, you know, we had someone on a Westminster board who ran a private school. And I always thought that was kind of a, you know, that was really not a good idea. And, and I was probably the little bulldog every time we were discussing anything that had to do with seventh or eighth grade tuition. I would not let him be part of the conversation because I felt that was just totally wrong. But other than that, you know, he, he was a, he was a decent board member. But, um, we just had to manage that he wasn't involved in, in that part of our conversations. So I'm not against Ian being on the board, but I do think that it's something that he needs to think seriously about, you know, being very careful. Um, you know, if we're going to go into executive sessions, talk about, you know, our contracts, you know, I don't, I don't know if, you know, it's executive session, I'm supposed to talk about it. But I, I get what Steve said and, you know, we're gonna have to be really careful because that can't get out. But we do it all the time. There's people on these boards with, with parent, with, you know, husbands and wives in positions. Anyone else? I know, I'm sorry, I've seen Jack.
Steve has got his hand up again, Molly, that's all.
Go ahead, Steve.
Um, the difference between a constituent board putting somebody on, there is a difference between that and this board putting somebody on. We have no control over what the Westminster board or the Rockingham board might do or might have done. But for us to take on that responsibility, it to me is just a totally different thing.
Anyone else? Jack?
Yeah, I, I really support the fact that Ian wants to join the board in the sense that I think it's really important that the Westminster constituency be fully represented. I just, you know, I just think that this year, what are we going to be spending a lot of time on? We're gonna spend a lot of time on negotiations because it's gone on forever. And we're probably going to spend a lot of time on budget because we are over the threshold. And that almost inevitably means there's going to be places that we're going to be looking to cut. And some of them could get very close to home. You know, I, I, I want to be supportive of this, but I just think that, uh, Ian, I just, you know, you're gonna be out of about a third of the deliberations because that's oversight, oversight of staff, budgets, policies, uh, and labor negotiations are easily half of what boards do. And I just, you know, if you're okay with that, we'll, we can find a way to make it work. But that's an awful lot, that's all I'm saying.
Go ahead, Ian.
Well, I see, I mean, I do see that, I was gonna kind of wait until everybody was done and try to make, maybe make a comment. I, Jason Terry's had his hand up for a while.
Oh, sorry, Jason, I can't see you.
Hi, Molly, thank you. So I just wanted, uh, a couple of things. What Mr. Fine is saying, I believe, is spot on. There's a difference between being appointed to the board and being elected to the board. And that person in Rockingham that we're talking about, Molly, was elected to the board, not appointed. And that person also in Rockingham, um, probably doesn't even know the day-to-day operation of what his significant other does with the special needs. Because I believe it's in the contract that she's not supposed to talk about it. So, um, they don't. And I just want to remind fellow board members, uh, last month when, um, Ian was, uh, you know, um, making comments under public comment, there was, um, you know, will he be able to follow due process? Because, uh, you know, I was proven innocent, so. Thank you.
Mr. Brad?
Molly?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I, you know, I know, you know, I think having Mr. Spartalotti on a, on a board, especially when there's an open slot, should, um, be taken into consideration. I mean, I've been told by many people on this board many times is that in small communities, you are going to get conflict of interest. And that aside, people know when to step aside and when it is a conflict of interest. You know, so I'm hearing and I understand what a lot of people are saying. But over the years, at least in three years I've been here, that's what I've been told. Every time I brought up a concern that there may be a board member with a conflict of interest. And, you know, drawing the line in the sand now, I know it has to be drawn sometime, but the Westminster needs a spot on the, on the SU board, so.
And, well, I'm sorry, Ian.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna jump in quickly. I just want to mention that I have served on committees related to school board issues with Ian. I feel like he was extremely respectful and conscious of his role on the school board. And feel confident that he would respect that in terms of any conflicts of interest that he might feel or, uh, be presented with if he was on the board. He has been a prior board member on, uh, in, within the district and during, you know, the whole start of Act 46. So I would support his nomination.
Thank you, Marga. Um, so let me just say. Oops, there's still more, sorry.
I just have one question. So he brings a perspective as a parent and from the, um, the professional interaction with his wife and then also the, the different ages of his kids. He's experienced the board or the, um, business of the board as a parent of a high school and a middle schooler coming in. So he's a concerned parent. Is there a place in the policy that we're going to be working on that we could address that so that it could be able to make people more comfortable? I don't know what policies we're looking at, but if there's policies in regards to board members and their, and their roles, since it's hard to find the board members, I mean, is there a place where that there can be some kind of policy where he would, you know, we could? I know he said he'd recuse himself if it was something of conflict, but is there a place where in conflict of interest that could be done policy-wise? To open it up for people?
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, Brenda, thank you. I, um, there is a policy, a conflict of interest policy that exists already that I think should be effective if we choose to use it. Um, and also I would point out that I have been working in special education for 20 years. Special education and developmental services. So I'm very practiced at confidentiality. Um, in fact, my wife also works in a field where she has to be very confidential with her information. And we have a, um, in, we have a good practice of just basically cutting out certain aspects of what we talk about. We just don't talk about those things. And so, you know, uh, I think that there aren't any laws or real reasons to keep me off of the board. I just think that there are policies that govern conflict of interest that we would follow. So that's my pitch.
So I have been on a board with Ian before, um, and he was a strong board member. I, I do understand everybody's concern here. I guess I'm not, I don't have a huge concern because I've seen it work in, in other boards. I've seen it work in the Westminster board. And Ian is a professional. He, he's gonna know when he shouldn't be involved, but we're gonna, we're gonna make sure he's not involved too, because we're just not gonna cross that line. That's, that's not where we, where we want to be. I would support Ian as a school board member. I think that he's a strong individual. He's professional. And we, we need board members who are, you know, nobody's raising their hand here and glad to see somebody doing it. Priscilla?
Um, I missed, I guess, one other question. Um, Ian just mentioned, um, having worked in special ed. Um, what positions did he hold?
I don't think he's ever worked at, in our district, right?
No, no, I worked at, I worked at Kendall Farm about 20 years ago to start. And then from there, I moved my way into working in developmental services. And I worked at HCRS and now I work at the State of Vermont.
Margot?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ian Spartalotti for the open Westminster, um, seat on the Union High School Board.
There's a motion on the floor to accept Ian's appointment as a new member for the Bellas Falls Union High School, representing Westminster. Is there any more discussion? I see none. I'd like to go to the vote. David?
I vote yes, Molly.
Jack?
Uh, hold on for a second. I, I'm, I'm in the middle of something. I'll get right to you.
Steve?
No.
Deb?
I'd like to abstain.
Jason Terry?
I'd, uh, I'd like to abstain.
Brenda?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Priscilla? Priscilla?
Yes.
Jack, are you ready to vote?
I'm going to abstain. I hope that's, uh, acceptable. It's not, it's not anything you can see and I'm just pretty uncomfortable with this.
We have four yes, three abstained and one no. Welcome aboard, Ian.
Thank you.
It was gonna pass anyway. And that's our light.
Molly?
Yes, David?
Before I move off the topic, I think it's entirely appropriate for Ian to, uh, participate in our discussion tonight. I just want to remind you and Ian that he will need to get sworn in in order to. I'd like to talk over Priscilla, but I guess that's what I'm doing.
Thank you, David.
I apologize. I was talking to myself when writing down stuff. I apologize.
Do you understand that, Ian?
I honestly didn't catch it. I didn't honestly catch it all. Sorry.
So you need to go to the town hall and get sworn in.
Okay.
To be an official voting member of the board. You cannot vote tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Molly?
Yes.
Um, I will, um, get Ian a SU email address, so he has that. So Ian, you could probably expect that over the next few days.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, are there any policies?
No, but I am happy to say we do have a policy committee meeting coming up shortly, so hopefully the next agenda, we'll be able to report out.
Can you tell me when that is?
Um, yeah, I'll just give you a minute to.
I kinda sounded like David Clackright then, didn't I? David, I'm learning from you.
I'll, I'll send, I'll send it to you in the chat so you can keep the meeting going.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the principal's report.
So earlier today, I sent a written copy of the principal's report, but again, as has been kind of my common practice, whether it's in-person and Fact TV is viewing us or here, rather than give a, do you have questions? If you're okay, I'm gonna read that so that it's, people that are here know what we're talking about, Molly, does that work?
Absolutely. Yep.
There are a few topics to cover. So the first one is an update on the HVAC work then, report that has come along with that. I've got a 126-page report here that I boiled down into a few paragraphs for you, but again, my first point is this probably needs to go to Buildings and Grounds to get sussed out for whatever action is necessary, but let me just read this. Jim DeBel and I recently finalized our work with ME Engineering on their assessment of our air handling system. This resulted in a 126-page document that I will share with all board members and which I recommend be referred to Building and Grounds Committee for review and action. The comforting news is that of those 126 pages, the first 16 pages constitute the written summary of the, the written summary and the remaining 110 pages consist of charts, diagrams and photos. My key takeaways of their work and findings, as summarized in those first 16 pages, include the following two points. Number one, first and foremost, our system reasonably complies with the safety expectations associated with COVID-19 operations. I say that because that really was the driving force behind inviting ME Engineering to come in is, are we COVID-19 safe? As quoted on page seven of the reference document, and it's a lengthy quote, but it's the most important part of the document, I think. The school has faithfully followed three, the three CDC recommendations listed. The school has installed filters with higher MERV ratings than the minimum recommendation, as well as increased frequency of changes to quarterly. Existing controls are digital direct controls, DDC, and reportedly have been programmed to do building flushes of, building flushes two hours pre-occupancy, beginning at 6:00 a.m. and one hour post-occupancy. The occupant counts have been decreased through implementation of a virtual model of learning. This increases the amount of designed air, outdoor air per person. The school has practiced distancing and mask wearing to prevent the spread of SARS-CoV-2 COVID-19 virus, end of quote. So that's their quick summary of our COVID-19 safety. The second important takeaway from this document has to do with the firm's recommendation for improvements and upgrades to the system. The short version is that they recommend $244,000 worth of work, which is best summarized as rebalancing of systems related to airflow and the heating water system, addition of some additional control valves and some revisions of control sequence software. The news is that none of these recommendations are necessary because of impending failure of any equipment or necessary because of unsafe air conditions. These recommendations, if implemented, will improve airflow, efficiency and overall operation of the system. The other piece of good news is that ESER III grants, which will be available at some point in the next school year, are intended to focus on facility needs. In my conversations with Superintendent Pratt, it is highly likely that these HVAC improvements will be covered by ESER III grant funds. And finally, I would note once again and suggest that this topic be referred to Building and Grounds Committee for a detailed assessment and for planning purposes. I will stop there for any questions on that topic.
David?
Thank you, Molly and Chris. Of course, I take note of the fact that it would appear that the occupant loading may have changed somewhat since this report was written and I believe that the occupant load is still appropriate for CDC conditions. Another one here that I want to bring up, and I think this is really the point, part, point in the meeting to bring it up, and that is, most people are well aware that in Burlington, high schools go into school in the old J.C. Penney Building because they discovered that their campus is hopelessly contaminated with what are known as, I think, PFASs, which I had to write this down so I could understand it, polyfluoroalkylil substances. And these are substances typically which have occurred in cleaning products, which are essentially forever chemicals, particularly after they enter the human body. And although this may not necessarily be an air handling question per se, it is very much a safety issue, not just at Bellas Falls Union High School, but I would submit right across the district. And I think this is an appropriate time to point this out, since the question of convening a Buildings and Grounds meeting has already come up. I want to suggest that maybe this is something that Buildings and Grounds should be looking into and having a professional report out on as well.
Um, I wouldn't argue against that, David. I would say that what I'm curious about is how pervasive that Burlington issue is in other schools. That's not, by the way, to say that's not a good idea. I think if those issues exist in schools, we probably want to make sure that they don't exist in our school.
You know, Chris, you've exactly nailed it. I don't care what's happening in other people's schools, I care about what's happening in my schools.
We agree. Anything else on that topic?
Anything else for Chris? Jack Breyer has his hand up.
Yep. Thanks, sorry. When the, if, if it's possible, is that report available in a digital form that we might be able to get hands on it sooner rather?
It was kinda tricky for me to download, but if I can download it, then I can probably send it off to folks, so sure.
I would greatly appreciate that. Also, in, in your scan of all those pages, did it talk about, talk about minimum standards for air exchange in terms of, you know, the, the two, the full refresh every two hours?
Sure.
Part, that's part of the CDC.
It spoke more about rates of airflow in different parts of the building.
Right.
So there's information in there on that. Quite honestly, one of the things that delayed us getting this done was a little bit of back and forth, because there were certain parts of the building where, quite honestly, they said there was no airflow and it just wasn't true. So we had to, that happens sometimes when you bring engineers in and there's a back and forth to get your facts straight, but, you know, when you can stand there and put your hand on the vent and go, well, that air's coming from someplace, it takes a while to straighten those things out. So, but I will say, I have not scoured every one of these 126 pages and I did spend my time with the 116, the 16 pages at the beginning, because, like I said, lots of charts, diagrams and pictures.
All right, well, we'll appreciate getting that, because I do think one of the, one of the goals for this board as part of our long-term planning process is to figure out what we need to fix between now and say, 2041. And this is part of that process. So there are things, Dave, David mentioned the issue about, about chemi, about chemicals, PFAS and others, and not only is it a cleaning compound problem, but it's often a problem with certain types of paneling, which is prob, you know, which is, which you and I have talked about before and probably would be talking about as part of our long-term plan, no matter what. So that, that's all very helpful.
True.
Chris Pratt has a question.
Emily, I would suggest that if Principal Hodgson can get it downloaded into PDF form and get it out to any board members, then if board members want to send him back the questions, he may have to reach back out to ME to answer those questions, because it, like I said, it is a very detailed report and sometimes you need a degree just to read those reports, but I would say give the opportunity for the school board members who want the report to go through it, send questions to Principal Hodgson, so that way if he doesn't have the answers, you can send them off to the engineering firm that does.
And, and I would further suggest that when Buildings and Grounds comes together on this, I'm pretty sure ME Engineering would participate in that. And I know Jim DeBel certainly would be a part of that too. And Jim did, as you might imagine, the heavy lifting of walking people around, answering questions, you know, giving them access to all of the stuff that they needed access to. So I think, you know, that would be a reasonable approach to taking this information and turning it into a plan.
Sounds good.
Next item? Um, there was a question about our use of the Haber Foundation donated funds. And so that's, that's the next item. And so your quick reminder is that we were gifted $250,000 from this Haber Foundation about a year ago. The money was intended for certain specific educational purposes, the primary one being engaging students in financial literacy, learning opportunities and engaging students in online learning opportunities. And just as a reminder, the motion that was made and passed to accept the money was to accept the very generous gift of $250,000 from the Haber Foundation with the intention of this gift to be the supportive student learning and growth in the areas of, one, financial literacy, two, online coursework of any kind which helps a student progress toward a high school diploma, three, the study of economics and four, the study of science. The first two areas listed are the priority areas for the use of these funds. The money will be placed in a reserve fund from which funds will be drawn as needed for the purposes listed previously in the motion. So again, I share that with you because there are some board, this happened in December of 19, of 2019, so we have some new board members since then. So that's what we got and that was the point. As I continue on with my report, thus far with our year-plus of COVID-19 operations, we have spent 800, $8,110 of that money, leaving a current balance of 20, 241,890. The expenditures were, one, the purchase of a classroom interactive whiteboard for a math class whose primary focus is financial literacy, and two, expenditures for online courses, which have increased during our COVID-19 operations. So we actually spent some of the money on online courses for financial literacy before we got to COVID-19, which was only about a two-month split, and then on the COVID-19 online coursework. And I, I mentioned that here, in the short period between December of 2019, when the money was donated, and February of 2020, when we first started dealing with COVID-19, we started the planning for financial literacy courses with the desired outcome of a financial literacy graduation requirement. All of that worked round to a halt when we needed to focus our planning energies on recreating school with COVID-19 safety in mind. As we enter our recovery phase of operations, we are now returning to that planning that began in January and February of 2020. That's that topic.
David?
Thank you, Molly. Those that on this board for a while may recall that I have made advocacy in the past that we require at least one credit through distance learning. It was an eye-opener for me that that was not at the time supported by a majority of the Bellas Falls Union High School, but that's the way it went. And I'm going to point out that we have just been through a very unique, what's sometimes referred to as black swan event called the COVID pandemic. And that threw us very abruptly into a remote distance learning situation, which I happen to believe we could have been better prepared for if we had, in fact, adopted that graduation requirement that would require one credit through distance learning. And I want to say that I have a great deal of disappointment that with the $250,000 grant, centered around financial literacy and distance learning, that we haven't used at least some of that money to prepare for better distance learning outcomes. And I'm going to be very blunt here, the $8,000 expended from that grant simply supplants spending, which this school district has supported through its budget for many, many years. And I'm specifically talking about the Brigham Young University online courses, which have been paid for. Now, having made my statement, I do actually have a question. And my question is this, the class which acquired the whiteboard for the purpose of enhancing, if you will, financial literacy education, what class is that, please?
It's our math applications class, and so Math Apps is a class that, when it was created and still serves this purpose, was focusing on seniors who need some extra engagement, extra instruction in upper math. So it's generally seniors who have completed either the first half or all of Algebra II, who will likely be going off to further education and need some shoring up in those skills. The person who has taught that has, over the course of time, incorporated a lot of financial literacy into that course and the use of this whiteboard enhances that work within that course. So the short answer is math applications.
Thank you.
Yep.
Priscilla?
Um, I'd like to disagree with David. The Brigham Young courses and any other, the ones at VTVL-C, when I was at the high school, any of my students that participated in those courses needed expensive help through a personal, person who was right there to help them out. So I really think incorporating the financial literacy into our regular classes and using it that way is much more helpful than, than opting to take a one credit or three credit or whatever credits of courses that are applicable to graduation requirements. I'd rather see the, a requirement that some financial literacy has to be incorporated into some of their classes. Just point of view, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Principal Hodgson? Jack?
Yes, sorry. Three, actually, if you don't mind, Chris. And the first one is normally when you are a grant recipient, you have to write to the grantor a use of proceeds statement, and if you've not spent the money, get some sort of, some sort of okay from the grantor. Now, I know Haber doesn't run like a lot of foundations do, it's a small family kind of thing. Do we have, have we reported into them? Are they okay with the fact that, that 95% of the money's still in our, in our account?
Sure. So I guess there's a couple of answers to your question there, Jack. What's that?
I said it's one of three, but I just wanted to get that out.
So first of all, there is a very important difference between grant and donated money. And that's an important distinction to make for you as high school board members, because there is a policy about accepting donations. And in that policy, and by the way, I, this is not, this is more information than, than action and function, I want to point that out. The information I'm sharing with you is, when you accept money as a donation, as per your policy, you are allowed to use it in whatever way you want. We will typically not, check the policy, Jack.
I, I, listen, I have a whole family that are nothing but development professionals. You'd be careful with this, because this is.
Right, so, but my point here is that that's different than a grant, is, is what I am pointing out to you, but set that aside for a second.
Restricted.
Can you let me finish, Jack? Just let me finish. The way we avoid getting ourselves in a pickle over that is we make a really well-crafted motion when we accept the money. And so when we made the motion that we are accepting the money to do these things, that's how we cover ourselves despite what the policy says. And I'll go back to the policy, I could be wrong on that. But in any event, the point is, as donated money, there was no sort of document regarding a need to provide feedback to them. Again, I'm saying that because I have been in close contact with them. So Maureen came and visited us over the summer.
Okay.
And we had a very good visit and she, you know, I gave her a tour of the place with all COVID-19 safety in place, by the way. And Caroline Hannan is her business manager person who works at a bank in Nashville, Tennessee, and we have been on the phone a number of times. And she's wonderful to work with, I have to say. And she's wonderful to work with, I have to say that, and has asked how this has gone. And I have filled her in both on what we've done and what we haven't done, and what the plans are for this money. And as I noted in my written report, within weeks of the board accepting this money, we formed a committee to start making plans for financial literacy for all kids. And as part of those plans, we were to bring forward a proposal for an addition to the graduation requirements, not that was going to add credits, but for financial literacy, taking one of the elective credits and turning that into a graduation requirement and providing a, I think, pretty creative, flexible pathways approach to giving students the opportunity to acquire that.
Okay, this TMI a little bit. I just wanted to make sure that they had some sort of notification and you had something either in writing or some other form that's documented, that they're okay. If they're okay, I'm okay. Wanted to make sure about that.
I will tell you that it's not in writing because it's been conversations I've had with, but I can send an email to Carolyn and say, based on this conversation.
That would be a good idea.
Sure. And by the way, when I finished her last conversation, she then said to me, are there other needs that the school has that we might be able to support? And I said, let me get back to you on that. And so I am working on that as well.
That's Aces. Thank you very much. The two-second follow-ups, and you've answered most thoroughly. Now, with regard, we all know that COVID has blown up everything and everybody was in crisis mode literally until this week. And we could make an argument that we're not done yet. Are we at a point where you think we will be able to have before the board a discussion about a class, classes beginning next August or propose online program beginning next August? I mean, this is not putting you on the spot because no is perfectly acceptable answer. I just want to know.
I'm going to give a probably not on that. But I want to say administratively, we've kind of re-engaged in the planning process around this. In a perfect world, what we would have the board act on between now and August is an expansion of our graduation requirements. You can do that and then continue to build the program. And so that's, but again, I am speaking a little bit out of place since that's going to be somebody else's task. But that's, that's the conversation that we've been having. And then with that in place. And the idea is a graduation requirement to be engaged with by 11th and 12th graders. The conversations that we have had is when kids get themselves better immersed in employment and working with money, which you see more of at the 11th and 12th grade than you do at the 9th and 10th grade, those financial literacy experiences, those courses, that learning means a heck of a lot more.
Again, again, it was really, this is a fairly simple thing. I just wanted to know, you know, if we, if we were there, if we weren't there. It sounds like we're not. And I guess probably for the second semester next year, that's, that'll be John's, you know, that'll be John's load to hall presumably. But I just wanted to know where we were, again, thinking it's always good to know what the progress is because if you were reporting to a funder, that's what they'd want to know. And since it's money we have in the bank, we want to know. And now I got an answer. Thanks. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, Chris, you're still up.
All right, I'm moving on then. So, management of the forests on BFUHS property. I'm going to read my part, and then Molly, I guess I will leave it to you to decide whether or not that memo that we got from Tim Morton is something that you want read for the folks that are viewing, but I'm going to do my part, and then you tell me what you want to do. The letter provided to the board for this meeting from Tim Morton is reasonably self-explanatory and provides some useful history relative to the forest management activities over the past 25 to 30 years, as well as recommendations for some next steps. As with the first item in my report, I recommend that this topic also be referred to Building and Grounds Committee for consideration and possible action. And I do have that memo here if you want to hear it.
I don't think it would hurt to read it, and then everybody knows what you're talking about.
Sure. It's kind of a good little history lesson on how we've been managing our forests. So this is to the WNESU Board. It is from Tim Morton, State Lands Stewardship Forester. Hello, Jim DeBell asked me at your request to assess forestry needs and opportunities on the high school forest. I'm amazed and concerned that I have been around long enough to have worked on this parcel over three harvests spanning 30 years. In that time, we have conducted managed harvests on a specific part of the parcel that is a white pine stand on the plateau south of the cemetery and a bit in some of the oak pockets along the edges of this stand. When we started, it was an overcrowded stand of trees, the struggling white pine, dying pitch pine, a rare tree, and an understory of invasive plants. In the first harvest, we did a quote "chipping" job to remove many defective trees that were turned into electricity and as a small number of logs. The remaining trees grew in response and were able to do it, and we were able to do a second thinning 10 years later. In that second harvest, we also released the falling pitch pine to try and save that rare tree component. It were still dying from overcrowding. We noted abundant white pine saplings that seeded in the, seeded in after the first harvest. We released more cropped trees and the pine regeneration saplings. The pine regeneration needed more release. We approached the board for a portion of the timber sales proceeds, 10%, to release this high potential pine regeneration, and they declined. I'll just point out there that when we have done harvests, it has been a moneymaker for BFUHS, and that's when he's, when he's talking about the 10% of that, those proceeds. The trees died. In the third harvest, we did a final thinning and removed any undesirable saplings and small trees, including glossy buckthorn and poorly formed soft maple. We retained, we retained understory pine, black birch, and oak. After three managed forest thinnings, I am pleased with the results, and these are bulleted results. The white pine and pitch stand timber trees are thriving. The regeneration layer, seedings and saplings, is growing well and comprised of native tree species with very few invasive shrubs. The stand is well set up for a future harvest, perhaps in another 10 years. If working nearby, some small groups of pines, of pine impeding the limited pine sapling remaining could be harvested to encourage the next limited generation of pine. And finally, as in his listing of results, other areas in the pine stand are at a density where both age groups can thrive. Over the years, little management has occurred in the remainder of the parcel, generally due to social concerns as opposed to ecological or forestry limits. These stands are well to overstocked with pine, hemlock, and mixed species of oak. From a tree growth standpoint, most areas are overstocked with low growth and declining vigor in dominant trees. Understory regeneration is generally underdeveloped. Constraints, features needing extra care, include a trail system, scenic areas along the river, steep slopes, and a power corridor. I think a modest and careful harvest that improves overall growing conditions is feasible here. Steep slopes, scenic spots, and recreational infrastructure would need to be protected. And in the case of steep slopes and the broad area adjacent to the river, left undisturbed with no harvesting. In the most recent harvest, we used conditions on, on the bid pool to make sure we had low-impact, relatively quiet, a low-impact, relatively quiet harvest system. And I believe we were quite successful. If the board would like to proceed, I'm happy to continue developing this idea. As in the past, we would assist directly for no fee, and all income would go to the district. The next recommended step is to conduct a review on the ground to discuss precisely what would occur and how. If we did this, I would envision marking and selling a job this fall to be conducted in the coming late winter-spring calendar year 2022. I wish would be to conduct a site visit with your representatives after I am fully vaccinated. Hopefully that is soon. Looking forward to hearing from you at your convenience. And that, again, is from Tim Morton. And again, I go back to my original recommendation, inviting Tim to meet with Buildings and Grounds, and we haven't done a Buildings and Grounds walk-around for a while. That might be a valuable part of that. So that's that.
Thank you, Chris.
Any questions?
Looks like you're clear on that one.
And some very good news. The most recent rating of BFUHS by US News &amp; World Report. Once again, BFUHS has been recognized as one of the best high schools in the state of Vermont through the annual rating of high schools nationwide by US News &amp; World Report. And by the way, if you want to see the details, you can go to their website, and you can dive as deep as you want into, well, how do they figure that out? Vermont was ranked 15 out of approximately 60 public high schools in the state. This is a remarkable and noteworthy accomplishment for any school in any state. However, when one factors in the fact that the public education system in Vermont regularly ranks in the top 10 of the 50 states, one could easily describe this ranking as placing us in the category of best of the best. All stakeholders should be proud of this accomplishment and the hard work necessary to keep our ranking by US News &amp; World Report in the top 25% in the state. And I will tell you that over time, we've been as high as sixth and generally somewhere in the mid-teens as we are now. So that's, that's that part of the report.
Perfect. Chris, could you give us a little bit of information? Just because I think people are always interested in like what graduation looks like. I heard rumors that maybe the kids are going to be able to have a prom.
Yep. So I'll talk a little bit about end-of-year activities. I want to emphasize, without being too much of a downer, that we will continue through the end of the year with some form of COVID-19 safety protocols in place. So just know that. As far as prom goes, only recently did the state of Vermont authorize us to dance. And it feels like one of those 1980 movies where some, you know, radical teen has to come in and change the grown-up's thinking. But we have gotten permission to dance, and that makes it possible for us to have a prom. Proms are generally planned like months and months in advance. So we are scrambling to make this happen and make it happen in a safe way. The senior class, historically, we do a junior prom. The senior class didn't have theirs. So I am empowering the leadership, both student and staff within the senior class to do the prom planning. We will be limited on numbers. Typically, when we aren't limited on numbers, it's come one, come all. It's a, you got to, it's ticketed, you got to buy a ticket. But it is likely that we are going to be able to support any and all seniors that want to go to the prom, any and all juniors that want to go to the prom, and any, any dates from the 9th and 10th grade of 10th and, of 11th and 12th graders. In the past, we have allowed people, students from other schools to come. With COVID-19 in mind, we will not be doing that. We're also limited on our numbers, so we want to make sure we're serving our students well. But that's kind of where we stand right now. We are actually planning to do the prom after the last day of classes. And the current date that is scheduled is the Tuesday before class night, which is also the Tuesday just before graduation. So Tuesday prom, Wednesday class night, Thursday graduation. That was a somewhat strategic decision because COVID-19 is still a thing. Should we get any issues as a result of this? Schools, classes are already done. So by doing it this way, we're setting ourselves up so it won't negatively impact the learning. Graduation, you asked about graduation. We are planning to do outside. We are continuing to listen, we continue to listen to the governor and the AOE on what they permit for outside gatherings. The best I can tell you is, whatever we're allowed to do, we're going to do. But as of right now, we're planning something similar to what we did last year, which will be up on the football field, taking advantage of the space that's up there and the bleachers that are on both sides and the chairs that we can put out there. But we are going to make it as close as possible to a regular old graduation as the COVID-19 limitations will allow us. Well, those are the two things that people care most about, prom and graduation.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
Can we, are we allowed to ask questions about the rankings or no?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Mr. Hodgson, I wanted to, my first question was, what was the highest you ever were ranked? And you said six. So, you know, that, I think that's a pretty good number. I was actually looking at those reports and had a couple of questions. So first one is, when I'm looking at it, it says Green Mountain is number nine, I believe. We're 15th. Last year, we were 16th, and Green Mountain was 14th. What do we have to do to get ahead of Green Mountain?
So that's a really good question, Jason. I will preface this, though, by saying, I typically, when I share this information, try to not make it, and us versus them. But, but let's be honest, I look at those things. And so I'm not prepared to answer that question, but when, I would have to go back and take a look at the data from last year and the data this year and see where they changed and where we changed. But let me just give you some for the sake of folks that may not have looked at it. Some of the key contributors to this are graduation rate. And so any improvements we can make in graduation rate improves that ranking. They take a look at the standardized testing that any state in the nation does. And so anything we can do to improve our outcomes on our SBACK testing will improve our standings relative to, to both the ranking and other, other schools that are ranked. So those are the two things that we, I would say, probably have the most control over within those rankings. So that would be where I would focus our energies.
I can, so I had a couple more things to get at time. So it looks like the high school, you know, remarkably, you guys went from 80, 82% last year to 89%. That's, you know, 90% is much better to me than an 80%. So congratulations to you and Mr. Brody and the staff. Looks like their reading is at 77, ours is at 61. Their math is at 44, we're at 34. So that, you know, that, you know, that, that, that might be where to explain it. And then how do we, what is the plan to help Mr. Brody to, you know, make this number even better for next year?
Well, again, I have to tell you that he and I haven't discussed this at, you know, from that perspective at this point in time. But it's gonna, I'm going to tell you, improving those standardized test numbers is going to be a challenge. And I say that not just for us, but for everybody because of the lost learning that has happened with COVID. I'm not quite sure that the makers of the SBACK test or, or that the folks at the Vermont AOE have any particular plan to change those tests. So if there's been lost learning, and then we engage in a similar challenging test, it's going to be hard to make those numbers go up, but it's going to be hard to make those numbers go up for everyone. And so if really what we're talking about is comparing us to somebody else, everyone's going to run into that challenge. So, but that is certainly something that John and I will talk about as we continue our transition toward him taking charge of the place.
So lastly on that, just two more things. So, yeah, I, because it looks like they're our closest rivals as far as like close to us, but everyone else looks up north. So, you know, for me, my goal would always be to number one. I always want to, I want to win at everything. If I'm playing you in chess or checkers, I want to beat you. And so, and then lastly, the number that really jumps out to me is our student-to-teacher ratio. Ours is nine to one, and theirs is 12 to one. And they're still beating us. So I just, we have more teachers, and we can't beat them. It just.
Right. But here's what you need to know. That is, I'll call it a feather in our cap when it comes to these rankings. So a school that has, that's, that's part of the ranking. The school that has a higher teacher-to-student ratio gets less points in their ranking. Is, is so, but when you say that 12 to one versus our nine to one, I mean, it, I would have to take a look at how Green Mountain staffs in order to compare our nine to one to their 12 to one. Do you see what I'm saying? So it depends. It's not just about the raw numbers. It's what teachers do they have in what areas?
So maybe the right teachers in the right areas?
Well, that's exactly it. So for example, I'll just, I'll say if, I'll use as an example, if a school is understaffed for math teachers, and another school really focuses on that and carries more math teachers, you could expect that the math performance is probably going to outshine in the one with the more math teachers. It's not, and again, it's not just about numbers. It's about the quality of the instruction, the quality of the curriculum, and the way in which you engage the students. So there are some very important numbers that you see there, but it's the story behind the numbers. The story behind the 12 to one versus the nine to one that is really more important than just the 12 to one or the nine to one.
So thank you for that, and thank you for the detailed explanation. I appreciate it. And I, again, I just want to. And again, I just want to make sure that Mr. Brody, you know, hits the ground running at 100 miles an hour and, and you know, the goal is to to win the race, so to speak, you know, and you know, my, my goal, it looks like South Burlington High School is number one. And they have 913 students at a teacher ratio of 12 to one. And you know, for me, that, that would be my goal. I would, I hope all my board members want to be the best. That's why we're here, I think. So.
The one thing that I would point out, though, and I noted it in the email that I sent to the BFUHS staff and I shared with board members, it's important for us to recognize without any level of excuse making, I want to emphasize that, that there is a real demographic difference between the Burlington area and the southern part of the state. And that really, it's obvious when you take a look at the top 15 of the top 15, only two schools are south of Rutland. And all of the other in the top 15 are Rutland or north. And that's as much about demographics as it is anything else. So so Jason, to kind of use your sports analogy in that regard, if we really are talking about ranking, it's not exactly a level playing field, you might say. So we'll just kind of leave it at that.
But hold on, Mr. Hodgson, you're here, I'm here. I think you're a pretty good principal. And I know I'm a very good person in this, in this community, stand up person. And I think you're a winner and I know I'm a winner. And I think all my board members are winners. So I just want to be number one. So.
Sure. I'm with you. And I'll tell you, again, I will speak for John Brody who wants to talk, but that's what he says, has said to me for the 12 years he's been the assistant principal. We're shooting for number one and I've agreed with him along the way. But John, your turn.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just, I want to just let you know that we're, Chris and I talk all the time and I, I'm giving him his, his due, his due will be given all the way to June 30th. So I just don't want you guys to feel that, oh, he's just sitting there being quiet. He doesn't know a lot. I've said to Chris all along that we are gonna be number one. And it's no fault of his or mine. We just maybe haven't analyzed all the areas that are moving. And I, I look at one example. I believe it was last year or the year before, Stowe were number one. And if you look where Stowe are now, they're in that, you know, that, that dead group of 40 to 49 where they don't even rank them. So I mean, what happened to them?
Yeah.
I don't know. I haven't analyzed it as much, but we will certainly put a lot of emphasis into all the factors that they're going to consider, but also we're going to pay attention to our kids and their needs too. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brody.
Thank you.
Any other questions or can we move on to finance? Priscilla?
Yes, it was projected that we were going to start going five days. So is that still on for the rest of the year? Can you address what is happening between, you know, in the academic program from now to the end of the year?
This Wednesday will be, this Wednesday will be our first Wednesday since the start of the school year with students in the building. And that's how we're going to continue through graduation.
That's good news. Anyone else?
Jack has his hand up.
Yes, Jack.
I, I really look forward to having football style rallies where John Brody is dissing the folks at Green Mountain in terms of academic performance. We actually did, back when Johanna Harpster was superintendent, we talked a lot about trying to find ways to use, to rally students in terms of academic performance. And I actually think this might be a kind of a fun one. The question I have is unrelated, however, and it has to do, thanks, John, it has to do with the COVID. For the last couple of weeks, it's been signaled that we'll be able to go, start vaccinating between 12 and up. And it is my understanding that it's now official as of today. And I'm wondering, has there been any discussion about vaccination clinics or any other sort of programs that we can do at the high school to encourage folks? And I, again, this is, I feel like I'm throwing nothing but curveballs today, but I want to ask if we, where we're at with that, if at all.
Did the superintendent feed you that question, Jack?
No, but, but I wouldn't be surprised if he did, if it's on his list too.
There, just over the weekend, a request came in for, I think it is a May 25th vaccination clinic for the Bellas Falls Union High School. And we just have to make sure that we don't have other scheduling obstacles to that. So I gave a preliminary thumbs up to that. And it is, I mean, it's intended for everyone, but it being at a school within our school district, they have purposely declared it to be intended for the youth, but, but that even came out before it was official that 12 and 15, 12 to 15 year olds were going to be able to do that. So yes, is the answer.
Thanks.
Anyone else for Chris? Move on to Priscilla?
Can I comment? Yeah, I was going to comment that that would put the opportunity for anybody, you know, in the high school, any of your students in there, because the guidelines for June are something like, you can have unlimited number of vaccinated people at outdoor events, which would, should lend well for our graduation programs and being able to open that up a little bit. So if we can, you know, get that, you know, with most of them, that seems good. I think it's up to, it sounds incredible to me, but I think it's something like 950 spacing of unvaccinated in June. So yeah, it looks good.
I just want to say, though, that we will provide vaccination opportunities. We will provide really good vaccination information. But I'm not intending to leverage things like graduation or arm twisting anyone who might not be inclined to get vaccinated because that's their choice. And I know there are people who would love to see us leverage an arm twist, but that's not going to be our approach. I feel like ample opportunity coupled with really good information will get people to make a good choice.
I agree. I agree. I wasn't talking about leveraging. I was thinking would make it available for people and so that people that were were hesitant to be in a situation where they possibly could be unvaccinated would feel much more comfortable because they could have their children.
Sure. I know Jack would love to see us on that.
Yes, he would.
All right, guys. Can we move on to finance? Flora?
Hi. So I'm going to keep it short. Currently, we're working with the end of the year. We only have two, three payrolls left. As for contracts, we only have three contract extensions pending for the high school. And currently, 49 contract have been signed already. That's the updates for us right now.
Okay, thank you. And you want to have questions for Flora? Priscilla?
Are we allowed to, without it being too obvious, can we know what areas the extensions are in?
I can take a quick look at that. So one of the contract area is a math teacher. We do have an art teacher and, yeah, two math teachers and one art teacher. Those are the big contract extensions that we still have pending.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jack, did you have a question?
Yes, there is a bill, I think it's S 115 before the House, that's coming before the House, I think, and maybe David, correct me if I've got my data wrong on this, but it, one of the items in it has to do with mandating more changes to the to financial software and financial programs. And I'm wondering, has anyone talked to you about this, Flora? Because it seems to me that the, that our legislature is doing what they usually do, which is running full tilt without actually asking anybody the consequences of this. Are you up to date with what this would entail? And do you have thoughts on it?
Yes, I apologize. I, I didn't mention it in other boards constantly that we are working as well with e-finance on all the changes that we have in our code. So the whole coding system is going to change, including payroll codes, which is a big project, a big impact. Right now, school wise, we only have Rockingham done. They're still working on the other ones. And then we are waiting on the end of the year. That's why I've been sending emails out to the staff that they need to put their requisitions in before the 14th, so we could close our financial system. So that way, e-finance could come in and switch all of our codes. And then after all the calls are finished and changed, we'll see what impact we got on that. And if anything, like any errors or anything that could happen, changing those calls imply as well that all the calls for the budgets that were approved will be changing, but we will, I will have to go into budgets and fix it, allocate manually what goes into each line, because as well descriptions will be changing as well, other than the codes. So it's a big project and we need to finalize that before we open the new school year, which is July 1st. So we are pretty busy.
Permit me, it also means that we're again doing another apples to oranges comparison. We're trying to do year to year planning and do budgets. And I just, I just want to know, did anybody ask you guys if you thought this was a good idea?
I'm sorry. So asking wise, no, this is something that the state implemented. I don't believe they ask. They just say this is what's happening. And I guess we are the lucky ones because we're actually the last union that is being changed. So other schools went over this chain and codes and everything. So I guess the way they put it to me was they gave us a little slack and cut us the opportunity of finishing audits, finishing budgets, you know, so that way we wouldn't have such a big impact.
But there's nothing that you're, because the legislature hasn't fully approved this at this point. So the question I had was just whether or not if we were going to call up Mike Marocchi and Wesley Goldman and say, what should we do with this? I'd kind of like to know what we should do with this, because Wesley said, I'm no doubt asking about it.
Molly?
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
No, Jack, as far as that statute that you're talking about, no one's reached, I haven't gotten a single email or regards to asking us about more changes in the, in the accounts. Keep in mind, too, this is the second time I think in the three years that I've been here, they've changed the chat of accounts codes on us again. And that was, we just got through updating the last ones and now we have to change them again. But no, I have not gotten anything from the state asking us or giving us a heads up. It's just, this is what we're doing, so do it.
It just seems to me that, you know, this is, that the constituencies who are affected ought to be involved. And we seem to have a style now that make these radical changes without really checking the consequences, asking any of the affected parties. And it just goes through, through the legislative process without even the most minimal back and forth. And I think it might be useful to change that, that's all.
We all know, Jack, they still haven't, you know, worked out all the bugs in the e-finance system, you know, it's still very wonky in regards to what we can even get for reports. And so, but yet they continue to move forward and just telling us after the fact, this is what we want you to do. So they're just doing their normal dance.
So I did analyze and we did set as a team and we did think all the incidentals that could happen. So that's why we want to try to close everything as soon as we can and be, you know, one point upfront. So that way, on July 1st, we could try to open the system and see what's going to happen. And then we could just fix whatever we need to fix. Honestly, most likely like issues that we could find, it will be like a line got deleted or it got changed and we will have to allocate that information again. But you know, that's why I do have everything saved in the system. As a backup, I have all of our budget sheets and everything saved in Excel. So it will be most likely having to update our FY 22 information. As well, we are not entering any expenses or revenue until we are sure that all of our codes are allocated. That will minimize errors. So we try to think out of the box, everybody put the little grain of salt in there as what could go wrong? And how can we fix it? That way, that's what we have already. The payroll set in place, our last three payrolls are almost there. And how are we going to manage everything? So that way, it doesn't have any impact on the staff.
Thank you, Flora.
You're welcome.
I don't see any hands up. So we're going to move on. We're going to, we have no unfinished business. We're skipping eight, moving to nine. New business, appointments, resignations. Who's got me? Chris Pratt or Chris Hodgson?
I don't mind starting.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Holmes is who I am presenting for appointment to the Family Consumer Science position. Her experience in teaching is at the elementary level, but her professional experience is in the food service and catering industry. And she has experience working with youth, teaching them cooking, both in running summer camps and as part of that summer camp process. Interviewed very well. Her reference checks were good. And I will tell you that she wowed the interview committee, not just with her professional acumen, but her high level of enthusiasm and energy for the for the teaching and the position. And I think we're getting a star in the making there. So Jacqueline Holmes is the person that I would ask the board to appoint to the Family and Consumer Science Teaching Position. Shelley Crawford is retiring, if you didn't know that.
Can I have a motion? Priscilla?
I would make a motion to appoint Jacqueline Holmes to the Family Consumer Science position.
Is there any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Hodgson? We see none. We have a motion to appoint Jacqueline Holmes as a family consumer.
Science.
Science.
Teacher.
David?
I vote yes, Molly.
Jack?
Yes.
Steve?
Well, based on Chris's description and her last name, I'd vote yes also.
Deb?
Yes, I.
Jason?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Steve, I have to say, I must be slowing the pickup because it took me a while to figure out your point, but yes.
That surprises me. I gotta say.
It's late in the evening.
Okay, Chris, do we have another one?
Not for me.
John Brody?
John Brody, are you up?
I guess I'm up. So since I'm leaving my office, I need to find a replacement to be in my office. We advertised, well, seems like We advertised, uh, well, seems like an ages ago, but, um, we then had a, uh, I formed a committee and I have learned that sometimes having a big committee can lead to many, many issues, but just a lot of discussion and a lot of time over this process. So I do feel this process has been done very well. We had three candidates that we interviewed with our committee. And we then narrowed it down to two and we did the usual check in, et cetera. Plus, it's someone that I have to work with as well. So I did take a lot into consideration. It was probably my first toughest decision that I've made in administration. Uh, and with that said, I would like to bring Mr. Sean Murphy to our board as our next assistant principal.
Molly, I would like to make a. I'd like to make the motion for Mr. Brody and support, um, his recommendation of appointing Sean Murphy as the new vice principal. Didn't mean, I didn't mean to cut you off, John, but it's your call. It sounds like a good one.
Correct, but I like your style. I've always loved your style, Mr.
We have a motion to accept Sean Murphy as our vice principal for the Bellas Falls Union High School. Is there any questions for Mr. Brody? Jack?
Yes, John, if you don't mind, uh, but these are important, these are important. And I would normally ask when we do these in the future to get a resume so that we can, you know, know what we're approving. But lacking that, John, you want to just tell us a little bit about your choice?
Sure. Um, so as I say, Mr. Murphy's been in the building for 14 years. He's proved in the building to be a good leader, an example. He's head of the math department. He's been there, well, he's been in math all the time, but he's been head of math department for a long time now, uh, working with a team of veterans. So that, that's not an easy, an easy place to go in right away. And, and they wholeheartedly back him and support him and have worked very well with him. They've, they've listened to a lot of his, um, changes that he wanted to make. Uh, he's very good in technology. That our math department were the first to begin with iPads and film all their lessons so that kids could then access, if they had been out, or the, and this is way before the pandemic, that they could access lessons if they had been absent or even if they just wanted to go over and review them. Uh, and it meant, you know, teachers, they filmed their lesson and they had to upload it and put it on their Google classroom for their students to be able to access. He volunteers for many events throughout the year. And he also attends many events just to support kids and see them in action. He has excellent student and parent relationships. Uh, I haven't, I haven't had any concerns or complaints around the way he's answered questions, the way he's worked with kids, and the way he's worked with parents as well to support their kids. Uh, he's also in charge of the path program, which is the, the school's health program, encouraging, uh, the staff to follow and earn their rewards at the end of each year in the points that they earn as they go navigate their individual parts. Uh, he's almost finished with his grad program, which ensures a reasonable training, and I'll follow up with that in a sec, uh, and licensure. He is currently doing his mentorship with Mr. Hodgson, uh, in our building. And Mr. Hodgson is able to, well, as you know, he's done it for 16 years here, instill a lot of knowledge into this young man's head. And he's very good on, his knowledge of all our initiatives and classroom management is ongoing. So I, I just feel he'll be a great person for the job. Lastly, my working relationship with him is superb because he was my assistant coach in soccer for all the time we were doing it, pretty much. So I know how to work with him in and out of school as well and in fun things too. So that's all I have, Jack, for now. I think it's a very good choice. I believe in it. I've got to live it and work it. So, uh, and the committee as well gave me the backing of it too. So, thank you. Thank.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
Steve's hands up.
Yes, Steve.
When would he start in this job?
Uh, July, July 1st.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay. Yeah, that was mine as well. Um, as I recall, he is the lead for the, for the teachers' union at this point.
Yep. And just, just like Priscilla, I think he has also learned a lot on both ends of the, of the battery. So.
Priscilla?
Yes, I, I worked with, with Sean and when he was in math and also worked on the negotiation committee with him. So, so yes. But my question is, is he one of the two that are on extension for the math department?
I believe he is, well, he, he is one of the two, simply because at the time when we were interviewing, it, it carried over. We only concluded our process last Thursday, I believe it was, or Friday. So.
I was just asking so that we would be prepared for, for, you know, knowing what's, what's happening with that math department. And I don't know, but I see that Sean is here, so maybe he would like to at least speak to us if that's appropriate.
I don't mind.
Sean, would you like to speak with us?
Sure. Uh, I always enjoy speaking to you guys. So, um, yeah, I mean, I, the, the opportunity had kind of been in the back of my head as everyone in the building is speculating when Chris was going to retire and whether it was going to be when Molly was graduating or the year after. And so I, I started thinking about if I had interest in, in stepping up and, and filling one of those roles. And so I, um, was in a master's program. I decided to do the administration pathway, just in case it was something I was interested in. And, uh, I graduated the master's program and the admin has some extra components to it that I'm, I'm doing now and really finding some, some interesting readings and course, coursework that, um, you think about all the great things that we do at our school and, and thinking back to what Jason's talking about in terms of, uh, being number one and what, what John has said ever since. I think I, my first experience with Bellas Falls Union High School was attending a high schools at work with Jack and John and Chris and Kelly Spalding down in Nashville. And I think the, the third thing John said to me was, we're, we're number one. We only hire the best and, and we're going to be number one. And then he's stuck to that ever since. So, um, working soccer with them and, and getting to know him personally and professionally, I think that, um, we'd be a good team together to, um, kind of work towards a common goal. And, and even if we don't always agree on the best path forward, it will create good dialogue and, and get us moving in the right direction and, and keep our eye on that goal.
Thank you very much. Uh, can I have a motion?
I have a motion, Molly. I made it.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, I got, I'm kind of sleepy, I guess. We have a motion on the floor to accept Sean Murphy as our new vice principal of Bellas Falls Union High School. Are we ready for the vote? David?
An enthusiastic yes.
Jack?
I really hate losing good math teachers over and over and over again to becoming administrators. Sean, you better be worth it, man. I'll vote yes.
Steve?
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Jason?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Priscilla?
I want to vote yes, but I want him to get that contract finished first. So work on that, Sean.
Congratulations, Sean. You are our new vice principal.
Thanks, everybody.
Any other appointments?
Nope.
Okay. Director's comments. Priscilla?
Yes, um, the NEA just, um, announced results to a study on the, on the impact of missed, uh, school days. And they were pointing out that 10 days of missed schools have a significant impact on the learning. When you get to 20 days, we're really looking at, um, uh, significant problems and, and ongoing missed schools by students usually. This year it's been kind of the COVID, COVID thing. So 20 days results in like mental health problems and future wellbeing. I'm pleased that we're back, um, to five days. And we'll be looking to the school to give students, particularly seniors, a best transition possible for their future, because that's what we've got left is just these few weeks. We'll get as caught up as we can and I have faith in our staff. Thanks.
Margot?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Brenda?
I'm all set.
You had big shoes to fill from the last one, you know. Jason?
I have none. Thank you.
Deb?
I just wanted to say how disappointed parents, um, at the middle school, um, students are because today, ton of them came up to the crossing guard to talk about how extremely frustrated and angry they are that they have to find some, some daycare or stay home and lose pay for two more days because of shutting down the middle school until Thursday. And that's it. I just wanted to express their, their anger and frustration.
Steve?
Nothing.
Jack?
Yeah, um, we are going to be returning to policy and it might be a more interesting one than usual. We have a huge load of policies that are out of date and we're legally not in compliance. We really have three that I hope will take some board time in the next several weeks, maybe months. And they have to do with the graduation requirements item that David has brought up, especially relative to online and, uh, and, uh, financial literacy. We do need to talk again about donated resources. We had a policy, but I don't think it's complete and we need a process for oversight regarding it. And we probably are going to talk about a subject that is controversial and that is vaccines and what is a, uh, what is a requirement and what is not. So, uh, uh, you know, everybody fasten your seatbelt because we are going to have chats about these items and I look forward to your participation.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Molly. Um, I just want to make sure that board members are aware that the WNE SU board will be meeting Wednesday night. We'd say it's going to be kind of an interesting agenda. And I would like to urge people, even if they're not voting members of the SU board to attend. And those of us who have dual roles and other boards, if they want to make sure their members are aware of it, that'd be a big help.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. That was a good meeting. I call the meeting adjourned at 8:16.